I would like to call to order the August 25th, 2020 school board meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools. If you would please, if you're able, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for joining us, for being here. Due to the federal, current federal and state emergency declaration and the Minnesota directives to residents to stay home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. The school board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they're not speaking. Board members wishing to speak should raise their hands, then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. Molly, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Larkin?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
A Samurai?
Here.
Lewis? Here. Superintendent Zena Stenvik?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, everybody's here. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. I will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Molly? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Let's have a roll call vote.
Larkin?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Severson?
Hi.
Palmer?
Hi.
A Samurai?
Hi.
Lewis? Hi.
All right, motion carries. Let's move on to the announcements. September 8th, Tuesday, is the first day of school for students. Welcome back. Also on September 8th, Tuesdays, there's a, at 5 o'clock, there's a Subcommittee on Policy via electronic means. The same day, September 8th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, the school board, there will be a school, regular school board meeting here in the community room and via electronic means. On September 15th, Tuesday at 5:30, there will be a school board work session in the community room and also via electronic means. September 22nd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there will be a regular school board meeting here that will also be here in the community room or via electronic means. Superintendent Stenvik, is there any correspondence?
No correspondence.
All right, thank you. Communication to the board. At this time, citizen and employees may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I don't see anybody. So we'll move on. We normally ask Don, but I guess we would know. Thanks. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Oh, I'm going Lorian. Second?
Second.
John? Any discussion? All right. Molly?
I'm sorry. Larkin?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Severson?
Hi.
Palmer?
Hi.
A Samurai?
Hi.
Lewis? Hi.
Motion carries. Great. We'll move on to the discussion reports and information items. We'll start with reports from school board members, and each member will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of our board. Let's start with Laura.
Well, I really don't have a whole lot to report. I did, however, attend a Zoom meeting with the Executive Committee over at 916, and probably will be attending another one this week. I'm not sure. It's either this week or next week. Other than that, I really don't have anything else to report.
All right, great. Molly?
Yeah, I attended the, a meeting on, that we had for the Subcommittee on Community Engagement, and also hosted the virtual community engagement session last week with Hala, and I had some conversations with teachers, parents, and also Superintendent Stenvik. Thank you. That's it.
All right, great. Lorian?
Yes, since our last meeting, we had the work session last week, right?
Yes.
Had the chair meeting before that. Had the chair meeting just prior to this, and also had conversations with Superintendent Stenvik, and that's it for me.
Great. Thank you. John?
Same as everybody, work session last week, and ongoing continued conversations with the community, asking questions.
Yeah. And Hala?
I was at the community engagement session with Molly last week. It was an interesting experience. It was good. Learned a lot from it, and I think that's something we can bring back later on.
All right, and that is, now it's me. Just like everyone, I was at the work session. We did have a chair meeting before that, and then I was able to attend, attend the chair, chair meeting right before this and have, like everyone, have conversations with different community members. It's good to hear from people. Superintendent Stenvik?
And Chair, members of the board, I've got a few items to update you all on. John Fry has been named the District COVID-19 Coordinator. One part of that role is to monitor the local COVID-19 cases. As of right now, the cases, or as of the last two-week period, the cases remain high in the local area, which keeps us in the range of that Phase 2 modified hybrid, so meaning students will start in heights from home, and then over, you know, in that beginning period of time, staff will identify those small groups that will come in for in-person support. John Fry and I attended a meeting this week on the regional support teams, which is something the state of Minnesota has put together, and their, this, the regional support team serves three purposes. One is to provide us with guidance and action when there are COVID cases or close contacts or exposures within the school community. Collaboration and consultative support from the Minnesota Department of Health as districts make decisions on shifting from one phase to another. And then assistance related to COVID testing. If there were to be an outbreak or questions about the tests that each staff member will be getting. The opportunity for the testing. In addition, we are complying with the Safe Learning Plan by submitting the Columbia Heights Public Schools Start of the School Year learning model to the Minnesota Department of Education, and then we are working on other COVID-related preparations, of course. We have the Weekly Commissioner of Education phone call, and then there's an AMSD Superintendent Weekly Meeting as well that's held virtually, which is really helpful both to hear from the Commissioner of Education each week, and then also to be able to debrief with 40 to 50 other districts in the, in the local, you know, in metro area in terms of how they're working on their plans to provide a safe learning environment. This week is an exciting week here in Columbia Heights Public Schools. We are welcoming new staff for Scaling the Heights, which is the three-day induction program. The teaching and learning team have planned an interactive virtual program, so very different this year. We've got a great group of new staff coming on board, and of course, the board members are invited to tomorrow morning, Wednesday morning, to greet the new staff if possible, and I believe you have that link, the Zoom link, in your inbox. Next week, teachers and other staff will return to work. Instead of an in-person convocation, an all-staff picnic this year, though, we're having to forego that, and there'll be a convocation video sent out on Wednesday. So staff have a lot of planning and preparing to do for this upcoming school year, so they will be working on that next week. And I would like to thank all of the staff for working through the logistics of the start of the school year. Families can expect communication from their child's school regarding the material distribution, orientations, open houses that will be conducted, and then all the online forums and other information, so that's all has either been sent out or is being sent out. And since the last board meeting, I've had conversations with Member Mueller, Chair Severson, and Member Lewis. Thank you all for your time. And lastly, I would like to wish Chair Severson an early happy birthday.
Thanks.
And that concludes my report.
Well, that can't top the level of unexpectedness that the birthday song sung by all of Columbia Heights teachers at last year's convocation, so that was pretty nice.
That's right.
That's right, yeah.
Forgot about that.
Thank you. Thank you, John. All right, I would like to welcome Director Sunstrom to tell us a little bit more about the CARES Act and the ongoing, where we'll be given an update on the CARES Act.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm going to give an update on the CARES Act. This is a continuation of the funding that we've already received under it. We, we got some Esser &amp; Gear money, and this is the, like, Part 3 of this CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund. It's called the CRF. So our mission at Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And I'm going to hit on the core values tonight of community and excellence. I'm sorry, collaboration, integrity. I can't see it with my, yeah, collaboration, integrity. Next slide, thanks. This is, the governance tonight is just for information. There is no governance, so there won't be any action on this. So the MDE had additional funding that came available, and it's under the Coronavirus Relief Fund. So as I mentioned, we already got some money under Esser &amp; Gear, and so this one, this grant now is for operational costs, supporting student, family, and educator needs and administration. So Esser &amp; Gear started back in March, and this, these funds now, the new ones, are available July 1st until December 30th of 2020. So we only have a six-month period to, to spend these funds. And this is our allocation that we're getting under this. We're getting $1,182,338. So we have now six months to spend this money. And this is what we are going to do with it. We are allowed to spend it on operational costs, and it doesn't matter what learning model that we have, you know, what the district is under, regardless of whether we're under in-person hybrid or any, we can spend this on daily cleaning, screening supplies, PPE, increased costs for transporting, and it's not limited to these, but these are just some examples of what we can spend it on. The next slide. Also, we could spend it to boost family, student, family, educator support, prioritizing equity, and they can be used for this list of items, and it's not limited to this, but this is what the MDE is recommending spending it on. So digital navigators, it's a new thing they defined at MDE, technology, tutors, translation, school-age care, professional development, actually, almost every, everything on this list is a need for our district. So on the next slide, you'll see what we have. This is our budget that we have put together. It may be, have to be adjusted a tiny bit, but we, we wanted to divide it up and allocate it out to the different departments and directors. So we're thinking childcare. This is the Emergency Childcare Program, or any other childcare needs that we would have under the community ad, because that isn't funded. We're going to rehire the tech integration teacher. For, that's half a year of the benefits, salary and benefits. It'll be instructional supplies, curriculum development, tech devices, PPE and cleaning, signage and operational supplies. We have a lot of signage. Special ad supplies, health. We already have the health thermometers that you saw in the entryway that will qualify under here. Additional staff time that we've had to add on, people to do COVID-related work and help with translation and different things like that. And transportation COVID-related, anything that we may need for additional busing or supplies related to that, and then other. So that is the total budget that we have, you know, identified at this time. And so if you have any questions, I could take them, or Zena and I can take them.
Hala, I'm trying to find you now.
Okay.
Okay. So it doesn't look like we have any questions. So thank you so much, Director Sunstrom, for giving us that update and for, yeah, spending that money quickly, but I guess in this environment, that's probably not super hard, huh? We'll move on to Director Bennett, Memorandum of Understanding on Class Schedules.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Tonight, I'm here to present on an MOU on class schedules and the focus with the core value of collaboration. So our teacher master agreement, it has very specific language on class schedules at the elementary, middle, and high schools. And with our current Back to School 2020 Plan, there is a need for a memorandum of understanding, not to adjust the educational minutes, but just to adjust how we are servicing kids. On the MOU, does allow for alternative instruction during just this school year. And one example would be at the high school, they see kids every other day, so having one day a week where they could have shorter class periods, and every single kid would see their teacher for each of their classes on that date, and our current language does not allow for that. There's also language to address alternative instruction in case we have to for the elementary and the middle school. This MOU was drafted in consultation with the Teachers Union, and they do support it. It was a, started as a collaboration of the high school, and then it just went pre-K 12th, knowing that we would need to make some adjustments this school year to our schedule. So tonight, it's just an information item, and then it'll be brought forward at the next board meeting for approval. So I'm just answering any questions you have.
Questions? All right. Thank you, Director Bennett.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Director Tuckroll and talk about the curriculum cycle update.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here tonight to give an update on the curriculum cycle. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and tonight really focusing in on the core values of excellence, collaboration, and innovation. This is an informational update, as the curriculum cycle has already been approved. So today is just to give you more information of where we are in this school year. Our curriculum review follows Minnesota Statute 120B.11, as well as our Columbia Heights Strategic Plan. And here's a snapshot of what the curriculum review cycle looks like. It looks very small on your screen, but you also have an attachment in your board packet with a bigger copy of this, and it's also posted online. And looking at our curriculum review cycle, it's a seven-year cycle for the different subjects. So in year one, we really look at that study and preparation. We look at the data to notice any trends we see, any needs we see from the data, from our student achievement data, data collected by teachers, as well as instructional data. Then in year two, we look at the program design. We really focus in on, after looking at our needs, what are some changes that need to happen? It might be that we make alterations to our current plans, but it also might be looking at new instructional materials. So that would happen in year two. In year three, after those changes have been made or planned out, we really focus in on that professional development and training to support the implementation of the new materials or plan. And then years four through seven really is that cycle of collecting the data, making any necessary changes that need to happen, and looking at how to sustain that. So as you look at this school year, the ones highlighted that are currently in the curriculum review cycle, and as I'll mention in a minute, some of this does change depending on standards and MDE. Some curriculum cycle assumptions that are part of the approved curriculum plan include that we use Atlas Curriculum Mapping, and I'll share a little about that in a moment, that there might be new courses coming about, and we present that to the board every November. It really is a collaborative process, working with teachers and stakeholders before bringing it to the board, including special education gifted and English learners in all of the subject areas that were listed, focusing on social-emotional learning throughout, the whole time, as well as college and career readiness and technology integration. Following MDE standards, and MDE really does have a cycle as well of when they release standards, but a lot of times it's changes. It might change because of legislation. It might also change because of COVID, which we saw this year. So those changes might cause some changes to our curriculum cycle as well. Hosting our board-approved curriculum cycle online, as well as including as many stakeholders as possible in the plan, focusing in on reading, math, and science, and then Superintendent Stenvik's favorite, keeping it under the budget. The first one that we mentioned was Atlas Curriculum Mapping, and we really use this program to support the alignment of our courses to the standards that they need to follow, whether it's state standards, national, or local. It also helps us support looking at horizontal alignment, which means across grade levels or subjects. For example, looking at second grade across all three buildings. Using this, we are able to see that the same topics are being taught in all second grade. It also helps support vertical alignment, so moving from second day to, second grade to third grade, or English 9 to English 10. And our staff are continuously updating this, adding more resources, connecting with standards in different ways. This is our curriculum development process, and this is one that we've used for a few years now, really trying to include as many stakeholders as we can. We really start with our teachers and our students and look at the needs that we have. We include our leadership teams in the district, as well as our principals and our district staff. Then we bring it forward to the administrative team, so any changes that need to happen, any curriculum we're looking at purchasing, we bring it to them, which then we bring to the world's best workforce. And our world's best workforce team includes community members, parents, some students sometimes. We have staff members on there, and they're able to look through them as well and give feedback. And if they approve for us to move forward, then we bring it to the superintendent and the school board for approval. So looking back at this school year, even though it felt like a different end to the school year, we still had a very busy year. We really focused in on supporting the new science standards, and this will be going, be an ongoing process for the next couple of years as there have been some major changes in what's expected in science, especially looking at the middle and the high school. We focused in on literacy support in the elementary school and interventions. We continued with our pre-AP for ninth grade. We looked at curriculum alignment to support eighth and 10th grade social studies. So when we look at that vertical alignment, there were some changes that need to happen, so we worked on that. We supported a K-12 arts supplementation of their new standards, as well as began some of that alignment work for 612 ELA, which will continue into this year, which is our English Language Arts. We created some pathways in our business and our BACS, our food consumer science classes. We started a new Arabic language course, which was exciting. We have a wonderful teacher in there who will be continuing this school year as well. And then we really focus as a district on standards alignment in our PLC work. So as we move into this school year, as Superintendent Stenvik mentioned, we really are focusing on the heights from home, the distance learning, which is re-looking at our curriculum in all areas and ensuring we're focusing in on the standards and supporting our students with preparing for the next level. We're going to continue to support the new science standards. The new ELA standards are supposed to be approved this fall. They were supposed to happen last spring, but they're supposed to come about in the fall, so we'll be working with our teachers on supporting that implementation. And the new social studies standards are supposed to be coming up this school year as well. We are starting a pre-AP English for 10th grade. And we're going to continue to create and support pathways in CTE, our Career Technical Education. We'll be supporting our new LEAK program at Valley View. We have one at Highland already. It's our gifted program, and we've expanded it to Valley View, so there'll be some support in there. We're excited about expanding ramp up to readiness, which is a college and career readiness program. It's currently at the high school, and we'll have some revisions, and we're bringing it down to Columbia Academy. So students and families can start thinking about that high school journey and what happens after that. And then continue with alignment and supporting those transition grades. When we think about pre-kindergarten to kindergarten, fifth grade to sixth grade, and eighth to ninth, how are we supporting them with that step? And that is it.
All right, thank you. Any more questions? All right. Wow, you guys are very thorough tonight. We are question free. Thank you so much, Director Tuckroll. We will move on to construction project update from Director Hennigens.
All right. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. This evening, I have Summer 2020 Construction Projects Update, and so I really wanted to go over the construction projects that we completed this summer that were board-approved and just kind of give you an update on those. Our mission again, the Columbia Heights Public School is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values throughout these construction projects, obviously, some of the projects are bond referendum projects, heavy involvement in community, so I really feel that we're really stretching across all of our, our core values with these projects. This, for, as far as governance, this is just an informational item. These are all pre-board-approved items. So I want to start with Valley View windows. You know, as with some of the construction projects, I mean, we'll end with the most exciting one, but, you know, new windows aren't necessarily super exciting. Some of these aren't super exciting. But this was a, a bid-out project that the board approved, long-term facility maintenance dollars project. We are very close to completing that project. The punch list will go through at the end of this week. And as with any project, when you go through the punch list, there's always items that we need to take care of afterwards, but it will be substantially complete. This is a picture taken yes, the day before yesterday, in the bottom right-hand corner of the, the inter vestibule doors, so that'll be filled in with glass, and there'll be new doors there. So that's the last thing. All of the windows are done. We just have some of the vestibule doors left that we'll finish in the next couple of days. North Park Roof Project, so very, again, very exciting. What you see there is the current place where our new solar array will go. So that's just the prep work for the solar array, so that whole, all four of those sections of roof there are new. So North Park, with the exception of the two areas that were done in 1998, have all new roof. So it's not something we'll have to touch for a while, which is fantastic. Again, funded through long-term facility maintenance dollars, and it is substantially complete. There's some break metal that needs to be done. They're still doing the lightning protection, but, or some areas, they missed lightning protection, actually. So again, punch list items. But, so it is substantially complete. Columbia Heights High School Bathroom Remodel Expansion, getting a little bit more exciting. Those that have been at events at the main gym or the PAC, or really any event at the high school. So pictured there is one of the, it's actually, this is the boys' bathroom, but there are now 10 stall bathrooms and six sinks, and they were two stall and one sink. So one, we brought it up to code, and eight was required to meet the capacity, and just on space, we have 10 now. So again, substantially complete project funded through capital and long-term facilities. So long-term facilities dollars will pay for some of the, the smaller portions of the bathroom that were existing bathrooms, some of those components, but capital will pay for the expansion. And again, this is substantially complete, like I said, and it's just punch list items. So very excited about that. And then not aboard, a project that was approved and went out to bid. This was a project that was being funded through the security grant dollars from the state of, about a couple of years ago now. And so we're, we're currently working on those projects between North Park and the high school and, or, I mean, Columbia Academy. So one of the items, we see more at North Park than we saw there are other projects, but we see things that we have a hard time getting. They get back ordered, technology, there's devices that are back ordered, and doors and windows is another thing that- And doors and windows is another thing that Lead Time End has gone out quite a bit. So tomorrow, we'll be having installed temporary window and doors and at no additional cost to us. And the permanent ones will come the first week of school. And so it was, for us, it was hard. You know, you need to have, doors and windows need to be fully functional by the end of this date, which is this Friday. And if you can't meet that, then you need to find an alternative. And so they found an alternative and they're putting in temporary. And a permanent will be installed the first week of school. Obviously, we would have had it installed after hours on the weekend. Given how we're starting the school, it's going to be a little bit easier for us. But, so now we have a doorway into the office, you can see there. And so you enter the vestibule. If you do have a reason to be in the building, then after your, after your credential at the window, the transaction window, then you'll be buzzed into the office. So it creates that another layer of security. And so again, only those that are necessary to go in. And then the doors within the office going into the building are secured doors as well. So it's, again, it just creates that extra layer of security. And, and we did carpet, a new carpet and new furniture in that area. There was lots of other projects that we did from a capital, long-term facilities perspective, but they were smaller projects, more carpet at the high school, additional classrooms, special ed classrooms are carpeted. But, so there was a lot of other flooring projects that we did, but nothing that, you know, meant a larger project, so I didn't include. Finally, North Park. I'm not going to reread this slide, you've seen it three times now. But the one note I want to make there is the last bullet point, virtual ribbon cutting, fall of 2020. So something that we've been working on since we weren't able to do ribbon cutting for the high school. And now we have North Park and not being able to have a large gathering ribbon cutting was working with Carl Sanderson to create a virtual ribbon cutting. So we, right now, our timeline is, you know, there's recording effort that needs to take place. We have people that need to be interviewed. And so we're working on building that right now. We've had several meetings so far. And so we'll be doing the work in September. And, you know, we hope to have that video released in October, the virtual ribbon cutting. So that's our approximation of timeline. I don't have a hard date on that, but, so, because we are doing the recordings in September. It's just a matter of how many, how many weeks it's going to take for it to build the video after we get our recordings done. So that's, that's a note on the virtual ribbon cutting. So North Park, just some fun pictures quick, and then I'll wrap it up. This was the rendering, coming into the project. This is as of this morning. So we're getting very close. Again, there's, there's some break metal on the roof that needs to be taken care of. And, and the North Park words and then that NP seating sign or artwork that needs to be put on and another layer of blacktop. But it's all wrapping up in the next three days here. So Fast and Furious. But this is what it looks like currently. Again, the back of the building, they didn't show the playground in the original rendering, but this is what it is today. So playground is in, turf's going in starting tomorrow. So that whole play surface will have turf, including the hillside. And then this sidewalk here is something that we added so we could connect the upper play surface or the upper part of the slide to the upper play surface, which used to be for the little kids. And so we've pulled that old stuff out. Some of it really doesn't meet code anymore. And we've reinstituted some of the stuff from the front play surface that was still very good play space or play structures, equipment. And that'll be going in here in this fall as well. So that will have a full, so really, North Park will have a very extensive play structure space in the back of their building. Again, cafeteria, and we don't have it staged, but all the furniture's in and the cafeteria's done and it's ready. And it just, it's such a fantastic space. So very excited for the building and, you know, beyond being able to serve, serve food for the kids in the space, but have a, have a meeting space, event space within the building. I've put through a couple others because I'm super excited about them. I mean, the new music room there is so fantastic. It's a larger space. It's got risers in the back, it's got ample storage, it's got practice rooms off to the left, storage in the back. I mean, it's just, it's such a fantastic space compared to what music in North Park was before. Because it was the only building that didn't have that additional music space, but the other two did. So pretty excited about that. This is the new library. It was one of the last rooms to be completed. The library, the art and science are the three last rooms really to be completed in the building. And so this is the current stage that it's at. Just some button-up things, the punch list for that, I think, is tomorrow. So the punch list for the remainder rooms is tomorrow. So most of the rooms have been punch listed already. Library, art, science, and one, one of the special ed spaces are the remainder spaces to be on the punch list. So, and that's going to happen tomorrow. So budget, again, pretty exciting about where we're at there. You know, we've showed it throughout this process. But our total revenue, that number will match what we said last time of $18,689. And again, revenues are, you know, the bond dollars that we had, LTFM, capital projects levy dollars, the, the security dollars that we received. And current total construction costs are at, sitting at, I had the budget, or the construction cost report ran this morning by Carl Sanderson and what they had. And that's $18,628,982. So right now, we're, we're sitting at, between the two projects, so total for the bond projects at $60,018. So I'm obviously very happy about that. And it's, so, you know, from Carl Sanderson's standpoint and how they, they set the budget to start and cost estimates and, and the considerations for change orders and the budgets that were put there for it, all, all sitting very, very well. So couldn't be happier with that. And, you know, and North Park went way better, actually, which we thought was going to go worse than the high school as far as change orders and, and things that, that came up. But in reality, because North Park went better than what we anticipated, we were able to do more than we anticipated at North Park. So first and second grade, we were not intending to replace the casework in those classrooms. We have been able to replace those casework in those classrooms, which is, is kind of exciting and, and very noticeable considering the 1960s casework that was in there. Another thing that we were able to do is domestic hot and cold water pipes in the, in the tunnels. We were able to replace those mains because things, again, with the budget were sitting so well. And we still had enough money within the contingency fund to be able to do those things. So very happy overall with where, where we're at with that currently. Obviously, there's still some button-up, the things that we need to do, punch list items. And I'm sure there's going to be some more small change orders that come in. But obviously, we're, we're okay. That was it.
All right. I opened by saying windows aren't very exciting, but I saw a twinkle in Lorian's eye. So, all right, any questions?
Can I make a comment? I don't, I don't know how to follow that, really.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I, I will say it's bittersweet, obviously, because we, we can't put students in, as many students as we would like in these spaces yet. But I'm excited that, that it's ready for them. I also want to commend you and your team, Brian, I think, and, and our contractors and vendors. And I know we were given, again, the bittersweet gift of, you know, being able to get inside North Park a little bit earlier than what we had anticipated. But knowing what's happening in the construction, construction industry with product and materials and labor and delays and cost increases that come along with the COVID pandemic, to be able to be done at the timeline that we were anticipated to be done and to be able to do that under budget, it is just incredible. I, I really appreciate your management of that and the vendors that were selected to, to get what we needed and what we wanted and to even get some extras through that and to, to do it on time and under budget. So thank you for your, your management of that. And I like windows. They're nice.
You get excited about all things construction.
I do.
Any, any additional questions? Laura?
I just had a question about the biodigester. When we're getting that installed.
Good question. So significant delays in that from COVID. The factory that producing the biodigester supposedly was shut down twice due to COVID. It started back up in June, and then it was shut down again, and it's back up. So I got a message, I think it's two weeks ago now, that the biomass boiler is, is, was just rolling off and ready for us because it's two parts, the biomass boiler and then the biodigester itself. And they said the biodigester wasn't too far behind and that they would, you know, notify us when it was ready. So it's getting close. But it's, we'd hoped by the end of this project that we would have those in place. But yes, COVID has affected those greatly, so.
Well, it's good to know that, that it's coming along. I mean, even with delays, you know, I, so I can't wait to see it, honestly. I think that's going to be very cool. Yeah, and wonderful job on coming in under budget right now. That's just, I, and it's just amazing. I really didn't expect that. Especially when you're right to almost to the dollar on your last project. What was it, $12?
I don't remember, yeah.
Something like that. It was something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it was just spot on. I was like, how in the world did you do that?
Well, he said there could still be things that come up. So we'll see what he does in the end, but.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much to you and your team for getting that done.
Thanks, Rob.
Let's welcome Assistant Principal Matt Miller to talk about the Tri-Metro Conference.
All right. Second. Perfect. All right, good evening. Madam Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Tonight, Jake Henderson, Jake Henderson and I are going to give you an update for the Tri-Metro Conference. Our mission here is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong and all succeed. Again, our core values in this presentation, we're going to focus on excellence, collaboration, and courage as we move forward through this pandemic. And for governance, this is informational. So no action is required for the Tri-Metro update. So in review, our Tri-Metro Conference is made up of nine schools. And I'm just going to read those schools off quickly. De La Salle High School, Fridley High School, Visitation School, St. Croix Lutheran, St. Anthony, Richfield, Holy Angels, and Brooklyn Center.
Hey, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Thank you for having me. As you all know, we have four approved sports from the Minnesota State High School League. Girls soccer, boys soccer, girls swim and dive, as well as girls tennis. Recently, well, I guess not that recently now. But a couple of weeks ago, we were given some really good guidance and for practices as well as events from the high, high school league based on the MDH's guidance. Something that many of us have wanted for a long time. But now that it's in season, they've given us that. And so we have used that to kick off those seasons on the 17th. And I got to say, our kids have done an awesome job with all of those protocols, safety protocols. And both Assistant Principal Miller and I have been out at tennis practices specifically and, and other practices. But they're, they're doing a really great job with being masked as well as staying socially distanced. Few reminders there, but I've been really impressed with that.
And then reviewing the sport seasons that were, fall sports that were postponed. Football and volleyball are going to move to the spring. However, the Minnesota State High School League has approved a fall training season. The start date for that is September 14th. The end date is October 3rd. And within those dates, there's a maximum number of daily sessions, which is 12.
In addition to those sports, spring sports have been approved too. I believe October 15th through October 24th. And they're going to give us more guidance on those specific sports too. Each day, though, our student athletes do need to complete a screening that they do at home. Includes a temperature check as well as check for any COVID-related symptoms. And their family or, or sorry, their guardian and/or parent must sign off that they're cleared for the day and they, they have to bring that every single day. And then obviously, for records, we're keeping those, taking attendance daily so that we know if there are any outbreaks, we, we've got a record of who is at practice, et cetera.
And then for scheduling the conference, the Tri-Metro Conference has decided to do conference-only schedules. This is consistent with, with what many other surrounding conferences are doing as well. And the intention is to mitigate risk by committing to a consistent competition pool in order to limit exposure with the extension of getting in all of our regular season competitions. So in summary, teams will not play outside our conference pod. So we had to reschedule some of our competitions. And we're only competing within the Tri-Metro Conference.
And then this, oh, moving too fast. We'll go to fan attendance then, no problem. We've had a lot of discussion around this, not only at the AD meetings as well as the Governance Board meeting this past week. And trying to be as consistent as possible with fan attendance throughout the conference. But then also realizing that a school may become more restrictive if they feel that necessary. But again, also focusing and kind of aligning that we want the health and safety of our students and their activities experience at the forefront of whatever we're going to do. And yes, we want fans and we want families there to watch. But we want these things to happen. They didn't happen at all in the spring. And so that is, is really what our forefront, or where, where we were focusing our energy on. So with that, Matt, you can go to girls swimming. So girls swimming, because it is indoors and it is a, a space that is a part of our school, will not have any fans at their meets. And it will be only essential workers. So that would include the officials and obviously coaches and then any workers that we may need at that event to pull it off. Additionally, with swim and dive, just today, we confirmed that at least most meets will be virtual meets. And what that means is that we will be swimming at our own pool. And another team, whoever we are competing against, will be swimming at their pool and results will be sent in. So we will have an official at our pool. As long as we can make that work with the school that we are competing against, there are some schools. are some schools that have, don't have their own pool and that may be difficult, but at least for most meets and possibly all meets, we're trying to be as safe as possible and, and keep our kids in a, in, in their own pool and feel like they can compete still on, in that way.
For girls tennis, home and away fans will be allowed at matches, but must remain socially distanced. The conference recommends that each participant is limited to two individuals spectating on their behalf. So that's for girls tennis. Boys and girls soccer, this one's a little different here. Home fans are allowed to come, come watch during competition. However, away fans cannot, they won't be allowed in the stadium. Okay, in order for us to manage this, each player will be given five wristbands each game for family, for family members or friends, and the wristbands will change colors for every game. So the big one for boys and girls soccer is no away fans will, can come in, and that's adopted with the Tri Metro Conference.
Trying to keep numbers down there. And I guess the rationale, a lot of discussions surrounding this, myself, Mr. Miller, Superintendent Stenvik, Mr. Principal Robuski, and then all members of the Tri Metro Conference. Our goal is just to limit exposure and make sure that we have those opportunities not only right now in the spring, but whatever we do here in the spring is going to determine what we're able to do, or at least open up windows for us in, in the winter. And so we're trying to be as safe as possible, giving those opportunities, but mitigating as much risk as possible. Whenever we do have fans, we are recommending, even in an outdoor setting, that you have a mask as well as you are staying social distance the entire time. And then an additional thing, when you are there at, at an event, we ask that you're only coming fifteen minutes early and you're leaving immediately after or waiting in the car for your student athlete. And so that's something pretty similar across the Tri Metro too.
And then our last slide here is competition protocol. Each conference school is in charge of conducting their school-approved COVID screening protocol before arriving at the competition venue. It is up to the Activities Department to enforce this protocol to ensure the health and safety of all participants. Homeschools will be in charge of checking in the officials with practices that are consistent with their pandemic preparedness plans and the Minnesota State High School League guidelines. And then sanitation of equipment will happen periodically through contests, and I have to add that we are sanitizing equipment after every practice on a daily basis right now. So that concludes this presentation. We are open for questions.
Thank you. What, what questions do we have? Laura or Lorian?
Again, I feel like I just want to give thanks to you guys. There's a lot going on, a lot of different rules and regulations and stuff coming up quickly and not always at the same time. As a parent of a student who has had his fall sport suspended and a parent who's had a student who has a student who, as, who's doing their fall sport, I feel like I've gotten really good communication kind of either way, and, and I appreciate that, very timely updates, new information as it's coming out, the protocols, the screening. And so I feel like I'm informed as a parent with students who are competing and I, I appreciate that because there's a lot of information you guys are going through and I, I appreciate just the updating as a parent on that. So, thank you.
Agreed, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
You know, Ed, we're, we're also talking not just, I know this is about the Tri Metro, but we've, we've talked about activities too, because that's under our umbrella as well. And so we are, we're in the process of figuring out how we can offer those opportunities to students too, maybe in a different way as well. And a lot of them are offering some virtual settings.
Yeah, thank you for that.
All right, we will move on to our action items. We'll begin again with Assistant Principal Miller, and you will update us on the Minnesota State High School League membership.
Yes, a couple of weeks ago, I brought to the board a resolution for our partnership with the Minnesota State High School League. So tonight, I believe Superintendent Stenvik is going to read that resolution. Oh, sorry, Madam Chair Severson is going to read that resolution, and it is this governance, this is an action item.
All right, thank you. I will go ahead and ask for a motion and then I will read the resolution, right? No, yes, Molly. John, second on John, thank you. Resolution says, resolution for the 2021 membership in the Minnesota State High School League, resolved that the governing board of school district number thirteen, county of Anoka, state of Minnesota, delegates to control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events referred to in Minnesota Statute, section one twenty-eight, C point oh-one, to the Minnesota State High School League and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolved that Columbia Heights High School is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district to one, renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and to participate in approved interschool activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Furthermore resolved that this governing board hereby adopts the constitution bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook, on file at the office of the school district or league-sponsored act or the, or as appears on league's website as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities, and that the administration and, and that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representatives identified by the governing board. And so we had a motion by Molly and a second by John. All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
The Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I almost didn't leave your room there, Molly, sorry. Motion carries, thank you. I, I almost ended it after Hala. Sorry. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you Director, or Assistant Principal Miller. We will move on to Executive Director Yemwe and E twelve Student Rights and Responsibilities
Good evening, Madam Chair Severson and members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. The board was provided with information regarding the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook during our work session last week. The following changes were made to the Student Rights and Responsibility, heights from home attendance guidelines, online platform student norms, and the COVID-nineteenth section was added. So I am here seeking approval of the updates for the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura, second, Hala. Yep, the hand raised, Hala for the second. All right, thank you. Just like every, everything, want to thank you for your time in preparing this and the changes, of course, necessitated by the pandemic. So we'll move on to a roll call. Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
The Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
All right, I will keep you Executive Director here for the building capacity motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. For the past several years, Columbia Academy was closed to open enrollment. And we've noticed that there is a change in our enrollment. As an example, we are now at about seven hundred and four. Last year at about this time, it was about seven hundred and sixty-six, and December of last year was about seven hundred and fifty-seven. Because of the enrollment capacity that has dropped, I am seeking approval to reopen Columbia Academy to non-resident agreements.
All right, get a motion to move that one forward.
So moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Second from Molly, thank you. Any discussion? All right, we'll do a vote. Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
The Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Let's move on back to you, Director Hennigens, and facilities fees.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. This evening, seeking approval for our new facility use fees. This fee schedule was presented at the previous school board meeting. And again, I just remind that this is updating a facility use fee schedule that was previously set in nineteen ninety-eight with some minor language update in two thousand and six, so definitely time to update that and again, seeking approval this evening.
All right, the motion on the fees.
Roll call.
John, second?
Second.
Molly? Thanks, any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
The Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Motion carries, great. And we will move on to the Association of Metropolitan School District's membership. Chair Severson, whoever that is, made a mistake on the motion last week, so we have to revote on this, even though we had discussion about it. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the MSD membership for twenty, 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 twenty-one. Could I get a, or can I get somebody to approve that motion?
I'll second that.
Somebody needs to, sorry.
Oh, I, I'm so moved.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay.
Second. Thanks, Molly. Any discussion?
So just, I think just to reiterate, we, we had a discussion at our last meeting. We just didn't have the motion in the second, even though we voted on it.
Yes.
And so we're, it's just cleaning up that thing.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. We need to make it square. Robert's Rules of Order, so. Any rule, any, any further discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote. Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
The Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Motion carries, great. Got a lot of echo going on, don't we, right now? All right, but since it's almost done, let's not worry about it, huh? We move on to board topics. Does anyone have any board topics?
I do. I just wanted to kind of touch base on the community engagement session that Hala and I hosted last week. Just, it was a learning curve for us. We definitely want to bring back the Subcommittee on Community Engagement to a work session, so if we can hopefully get added in September, just to have some discussion around process and how we'll go about that, maybe an agenda, a rotation, different things. The, we had about ten parents come to the meeting, it was virtual. Some of them were more active in questions than others. A lot of the information, some of it was specific and we have passed those concerns, questions on to admin. A couple of things that I think would be worth noting to the general public is, one of the big concerns was social emotional needs of our high school students. And Superintendent Stenvik did communicate back with me that there will be encore classes held and also an introduction of the school social workers, which will be vital in providing some of that support for our students. So that information will be coming out. Some other questions people had was just in terms of communication from the schools, some frustration around some schools communicating earlier and at different times. So again, that information has been passed on. We also spent some time just talking about the different phases of heights from home and hybrid learning and how and when we would move back and forth between that. Like Hala said before too, it was, you know, it was a learning curve for us, but the people that participated, it was great to see them. Hala, do you have anything that you want to add?
Well, it looks like you covered it all, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
And for continuing on that learning curve on behalf of all of us, appreciate it. Other topics?
All right, hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at eight oh six PM.